Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. Let the record show that all councils are present. Meeting called to order. First order of business, City of Hibbing Police Department, oath of office. At this time, I will turn it over to Chief Esty. First up is Chief.
So you're chilled. Read right in and repeat after me, please. I, Brandon Gorin.
I, Brandon Gorin.
Have been newly appointed.
Newly appointed.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the City of Hibbing.
For the City of Hibbing.
And hereby solemnly swear.
And hereby solemnly swear.
That I will defend and force and obey.
That I will defend and forcefully pay.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Laws of the State of Minnesota.
The laws of the State of Minnesota.
And the City of Hibbing.
And the City of Hibbing.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and partially discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So what we got.
So what we got.
Welcome over.
Thank you.
Read right out, please. I, Cody Lawan.
I, Cody Lawan.
Having newly appointed.
Newly appointed.
As a captain for the City of Hibbing.
As a captain for the City of Hibbing.
And the State of Minnesota.
And the State of Minnesota.
And hereby solemnly swear.
And hereby solemnly swear.
That I will defend.
That I will defend.
And force and obey.
And force and obey.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And laws of the State of Minnesota.
And laws of Minnesota.
And the City of Hibbing.
And the City of Hibbing.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties as captain.
The duties as captain.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So what we got. Congratulations.
Awesome. Congratulations. Congratulations to everybody. Okay, moving on. Adds and deletes. Add consent agenda item one, item 11, and item 12. Add license and permits, item four and item five. Next up, I need a motion for approval of agenda.
I make a motion?
We have a motion by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Next up, approval of minutes. Approve the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council meeting of September 7th, 2022. Wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Harkinen.
Support.
Support by Councilor Drainis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop meeting of September 7th, 2022. Wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Schreiber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Next up, consent agenda. Item one, approve accounts payable dated 9/14/2022. Check 17-43022 through 17-3125 in the amount of $909,049.37. 9/21/22. Check 16-8446 in the amount of $8,448.18. Item two, approve the city payroll for pay period ending 9/9/2022. Check 16-8435 through 16-8445 in the amount of $531,446.19. Item three, approve the renewal of the 2023 group Medicare renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield for post-65 retirees. Item four, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Hibbing Police Department in the Algonquin Youth Activities K9 fundraiser Saturday, October 8th, 2022 at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Item five, approve the 2022 fall yard waste cleanup beginning October 24th and ending November 4th, 2022. Item six, approve the putting the recreation program and the marketing slash communication manager positions on hold. Item seven, authorize the hire of paid-on-call firefighter Josh Spray. Item eight, authorize the hire of paid-on-call firefighter Brianna Hansen. Item nine, set the next regular meeting for Wednesday, October 5th, 2022 at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Item 10, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, October 5th, 2022 following the city council meeting in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chambers. Item 11, annul the retirement of Teresa Torval, HR Director, effective October 31st, 2022. Item 12, set the public hearing for the adoption of final levy on Wednesday, December 7th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chamber. And a reminder, approve that September 7th, 2022 city council meeting authorized the Hibbing City Council to attend Coffee with the Cop on Wednesday, October 5th, 2022 at Caribou Coffee. Wish of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoff and Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilor Harkinen.
If I could say a word about number 11 after.
Um, yes, and I was gonna say, but okay, uh, yeah, um, we'll talk about that after, right after. We can discuss it now before we approve it, if you want. Go ahead.
We're losing one of our top-notch quality employees in Teresa Torville. She's been a phenomenal force in City Hall for many, many, many years. And a joy to work with, very knowledgeable. It's a huge loss for the City of Hibbing, and I'd just really like to thank her and wish her a very happy retirement.
Yeah. And I just wanna piggyback on what Councilor Harkinen said. I knew Teresa personally before I became mayor, and when I took over the job, you know, became mayor, she helped me along the way. She knew what was going on, and she wasn't gonna leave till she found someone capable. And we have someone in the audience that we hired, was it, about only a month ago, Angela. Yeah, and I think Teresa knows, you know, with the help of Candy and Greg, you know, when they did the hire of Angela, that Teresa was gonna stick around a little while longer, but she decided that she's leaving in capable hands. But so I appreciate that, that Angela, you know, she has a lot of, a lot of respect and a lot of, you know, she cares, she knows she can do the job. But Teresa was here, and we lost a lot of experience, but we have someone that's coming in new and that has a lot of experience too. So I just wanna tell Teresa, enjoy your retirement, and thanks, Teresa. So, that's it.
Mayor?
Uh, Candy.
I just wanted to make a note on accounts payable. The second one, it should be check number 173126.
On which one is it?
Uh, the second line.
Oh, okay.
On, yeah, from today's check run.
Okay. Thanks, Candy. I just read what's printed there. Thank you. Otherwise, we had a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Okay, next up, public forum. Let it be known, you have five minutes to present your issue, and no formal action will be taken at this time. I guess Brian Purpich and Steph Vessel just come up to the podium, and you have five minutes to present your issue.
Well, I don't know if it's really an issue as a, was a surprise to us. First of all, I represent Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey, and Steph represents the Hibbing.
Figure skating club.
Figure skating club, and we have, we both have the same, that's why we're standing together, is we both have the same issue, and that's not really an issue, and I believe that we can work through it. But the issue that we have is that we were presented with a, well, we were told that we're gonna have to get into a user agreement, which I totally agree with. I also agree with the fact that Hibbing Chisholm Youth Hockey, I guess I can't speak on behalf of the Hibbing Figure Skating Club, but we do agree that it's time that we start paying for ice time. But what I would ask is, you know, I wish that we would have this conversation six months prior so that we could build it into our pricing and see what is available. In other words, what I'm trying to say is, and I did speak with Greg and Nick, and it's my understanding that they are willing to sit down with us and discuss, and that's kind of why I'm here, is so that we could have a request, and not at the city council, but have a negotiating meeting where we could have some council members present and ultimately get something signed. Because the rates for the second and third year just aren't, aren't going to be feasible for us. We have to look at numbers, and first of all, we do love the Memorial Building. It's our favorite place to play. We're trying, we're battling, you know, with the fairgrounds, and that is definitely something that isn't gonna be, you know, usable for us in the long term. But basically, what I'm asking for is, is, you know, some clarification on, on, you know, what is the goal of this new structure? I mean, I did talk to Greg a little bit, and I'm starting to get more information, but I just wanna understand, you know, more importantly, what is the end goal of the Memorial Building? Is it, is it to break even? Is it, you know, that's kind of what I'm after, because if we know what the goal is for the city, then maybe we can work collaboratively, because we're obviously on a tight budget. You know, last, not this last year, we broke about even the previous year, which was during COVID. You know, we lost $30,000. So coming up with extra money to facilitate our youth programs and youth figure skating, which I believe is a very important part of why people wanna live in Hibbing, is because they had a great experience with hockey and figure skating. And, but I do wanna say a special thanks to Greg for coming up and introducing himself. And I guess not really asking for anything other than the fact that I would like to maybe schedule a meeting so that we could have a meeting of the minds and kind of just go through it and walk through it so that we can maybe come up with some collaborative ideas on how we can make it a win-win for our association, or the Hibbing, or the Hibbing Figure Skating Club, and the city. I mean, we, we understand that times are different, and we all wanna, well, first of all, we all wanna use the Memorial Building. It's such a beautiful facility. I wish we could afford to use it more, but we do have the fairgrounds under our ownership. And hopefully, you know, eventually, you know, long-term goals, I've been here before, saying that we would like to have, enter a long-term lease with the city if they do ever decide to move on that. I know that's tabled for now, but that's kind of where we think that Hibbing Hockey and the Hibbing Figure Skating Club is going. So let me know if, you know, Greg, I can leave my information, and if you wanna talk, you know, maybe we can get something resolved before, that we can put up before the next city council meeting, and, and work together to ultimately benefit the kids. You know, that's, that's why we're here. We're standing, because we have kids in the program. There's some council people that have kids in the program, and in one way or shape or form, everyone has, you know, been touched by Hibbing Hockey, I would assume. And a lot of the young girls and young boys, that maybe hockey's not their sport, there's, there's figure skating, and that teaches a lot of discipline too. So we just look forward to working with you and ultimately coming up with a win-win situation. And I guess that's kind of what I had in mind. I'm not trying to come down on how it came down. I'm not even arguing the points of the contract. I just wanted to say that, that we're just gonna have to enter into a discussion.
I think, I think spinning off quick on that, you know, I guess, speaking on behalf of the Figure Skating Club, you know, we meet once a month for meetings, you know, and we were aware of this agreement on 9/8, and it was proposed with Nick and the administrator and the president of the skating club on the 12th, on 9/12, and then we had our annual meeting at 9/18. So the timeline was really crunched. We went over the, you know, the agreement at the meeting, and, you know, there's a lot of just detailed things that we would just like to just discuss before, I mean, right now, we aren't able to sign it due to there's certain things on the agenda that, that are, you know, structured out, and we just, we can't do it right now. We wanna use the Memorial Building, you know, that's our home. You know, we're, the girls are there at 6:00 AM every morning. They love it. And so we just wanna make sure that, that it works for everybody and all around.
And like I said, I know the council and with the budget and everything, and if you heard the consent agenda tonight, we even are putting off hiring, you know, and then times are, with the COVID, I know it hit you, but it hit the city hard too, you know, and I mean, I'm not gonna get into thing. We're councilors elected by the people. The staff is here to do their job, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get involved in what the staff is. I'll listen to your, you know, I'll listen to the public forums. I get called all the time, all the councilors do. You know, Greg and Nick and Finance, they've looked at everything, and I'm not gonna get into details of that. So I'm sure if you wanna have a meeting with Nick and, and Greg, I can tell you for a fact, as the mayor, I'd sit in, but I'm not gonna give my input on any of that, because right now, I've always thought you hire your staff, you pick the best ones, just like we lost someone tonight to do their job. So set up a meeting with Nick and Greg, our city administrator, and that's all I could say on that behalf, you know.
And we just look forward to working with them.
And I'll turn it over to Greg, too.
Yep, I got something too.
Uh, I'll let Greg go first, and then, then you.
Mayor of City Council, thank you. So, a couple things. One of the things that we have identified is, some of our users, there's nothing in writing as far as how it works mechanically. So one of the things we're trying to do is correct that. We wanna make sure that it's clear to us what our obligation is to our users and what our users' obligation is to us. To answer your question, John, I mean, we're not trying to make money. We're not even proposing it to be a net zero. We just needed a place to start. And to your point, our timing was probably off a little bit. So my apologies to, to all of our users and our city council. But we would like to make it stronger, bolster kind of what we do, make sure that the resources are available when we need to recapitalize. And we want our users all to be healthy and to be able to grow their passion, whether it's hockey or skating, or, you know, whatever it may be the case. We'd be happy to sit down with, with all of our users and work through this. We understand budget challenges. I mean, we're going through the same thing. So we'll find a pathway. We'll come back to the city council with all those agreements, and we'll smooth it out. So.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say that. I mean, the biggest, the biggest part on that was, it was a timing deal. And we had talked, I talked with you, I'd talked with several people. As far as budgets were made, as far as who was registration was figured out, and then all of a sudden, you know, this comes up. So I agree, something does have to, something has to be done as far as rental hours, and we all agree on that. How that is done and how it's figured out, it's still gotta be viable for both sides. And when this meeting comes, I'm sending an invite, because I'd be more than happy to participate in that, to make sure, make sure everything goes good for both sides, the best I can anyway.
Okay, otherwise, that's it. We're over five minutes, but.
Yeah, anyways, I just have one final thing. Greg, should I give you a call, or do I, how do I schedule these?
I know.
Stuff you can.
I, I do have your phone number. I just sent you a text just saying, if you haven't changed your number.
No.
Okay, but I don't have steps, but I was trying to get yours from someone else, so.
Okay.
Got it.
And it sounds like Nick has been in contact with you. So we've, we'll, we can reach out and schedule.
We're not, we're not, like I said, we're not, we're not here to be, we're just here to recognize and let every council know where we're coming from and just have a, like an open discussion, that's all. We appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, Department and Committee report. Item one, under City Engineer, Mr. Story, item eight.
Uh, Mayor Council, in your packet is updated schedule for the cemetery rates for 2023. There's been a few meetings on this. This has not been updated since early 2000s, so this kind of gets us in line with surrounding communities, and we're asking for council approval.
Okay, wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Schreiber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Drainis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Uh, item two, under City Service, Supervisor, Mr. Arrol, item eight.
Good evening, Mayor Council. First thing I have before you tonight is a request for the mayor and clerk treasurer to sign the merchant agreement with Forte. And Forte is our credit card, will be our credit card processor provider for the new Civic Rec website and the Civic Engage website through Citi. So this will just get that contract going. The big thing to note on this would be the convenience fees for doing credit card processing. When a person makes a purchase, those transactional fees will be passed on to the customer. So there will be a prompt that'll come up and say, you're charged X amount of dollars extra for this convenience fee. So the fees will be passed on to the consumer and not to the city. So.
Okay. Wish of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Your motion by Councilor Hoff and Sockman. Support by Councilor Harkinen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Item B.
Uh, item B is, like Jesse said, regarding rates. These would be the rates for the Memorial Building for rental rates of the boardrooms and such. I would like to implement these immediately in October, if possible, and not wait until January, just because most of our renters do book now in the fall and go all the way through the winter time, and it'll cross over a calendar year. So I would like to implement these, starting October 1st, with your approval.
Okay, wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Uh, Councilor Bayless.
Real quick, just to clarify, if there was somebody, if something already scheduled, we're not gonna jump them on October 1st, right?
Correct, correct. Yep, anything that's on the books currently, we are not gonna go back on them or anything. So.
Good enough. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, item three, building official, Mr. Green. Item A.
Mayor and Council, this is to update our fee schedule for building permits, zoning, and zoning hearings. Well, the fee schedule used for building permits is 1991, 1997, between those two. And so they haven't been updated since before 2000. It's not that they were out of line, but in the last five years, corresponding with other communities in our area, not the metro area, we came up with a better fee schedule that's in line with Grand Rapids, Virginia, and it's also one recommended by Liga, Minnesota Cities.
Okay. And I think that would start, I mean, we, we could start when it's approved, which, I didn't put a date on starting, but that's what I assumed. If it's approved, we would just begin this new fee schedule. Okay. Wish of the council.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the new rates starting October 1st.
October 1st?
Yeah. That work?
Just so not everybody runs in now.
I would really suggest, yes, that we do start it after approval. Or do we need a date?
It could be done on approval. It's up to the council.
It's up to you, Council.
That's my suggestion.
If you prefer to do it immediately, I'm happy.
Yeah.
That's fine. I'll retract the October 1st part.
The residential hasn't changed a lot, you know, the residential.
True.
So, update it as, as soon as we approve it.
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilor Harkinen.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schreiber. Any more discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Uh, item four, City Clerk Treasurer, Mrs. Mullner, item A.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I am offering Resolution Number 22-09-06 to approve the 2023 preliminary levy for the City of Hibbing in the amount of $9,993,520. During this budget cycle this year, city staff has worked extensively on our 2023 budget. We started in July. We have faced many challenges, including the rising inflation, supply chain disruptions, and aging infrastructure. We are trying to prioritize the most important services and projects to best serve the needs of our taxpayers. In this budget, the preliminary, in this preliminary budget, it includes an increase in the levy in the general fund of $104,171, which is a 1.62% increase from last year. This increase includes contracted pay increases for personnel, an increase to employee insurance of 9.5% for our active employees, and an increase in operating supplies due to that inflation I talked about. The levies for the capital improvement, permanent improvements are the largest increase totaling $951,138. This includes purchases such as new ambulance, reconstruction of the Rainy Road Bridge, our annual city paving and sidewalk projects, and other various equipment that has exceeded its useful life. We also have budgeted the Mindview and the Cary Lake Campground projects, which are two major budgeted projects, and we are looking at completing these with other financing methods other than the levy dollars. We have secured IRRB grant funding for both projects, as well as $1.3 million in state bonding money for the Mindview. With American Rescue Plan funding, we have been able to leverage those dollars towards our local match on some of these grants. The city has begun completing facility assessments on our public buildings, and we have appropriated capital dollars for improving them. Our tax abatement, OPEB, library, and HEA levies all remain stable this year. Our debt service levy decreased by $59,697, or 14%. This decrease is a result of our 2012 equipment certificates getting paid off in 2022. With these changes, we are proposing a preliminary levy increase of 10.95%. First, St. Louis County, this increase would raise the taxes of a home valued at $100,000 by $12.50. However, the housing market has seen substantial increases in market values, and even a small increase in the assessed value would result in higher tax capacity for a home, thus increasing their taxes. This increase is more market-driven and not driven by the levy that we are setting. Nonetheless, we will continue to work towards decreasing the levy in the next few months while continuing to best serve the taxpayers of Hibbing. The final levy will be set in December, and it cannot exceed the preliminary levy. Resolution 22-09-06 is enclosed for your consideration.
Okay. Wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by, oh, go, Councilor Harkinen. Standing opposed. Support by Councilor Harkinen. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Harkinen.
Thanks to Finance and Greg and all the people, the department heads, Candy and everyone else have been extremely, extremely busy on trying to get this levy down to where it is. And I know it's been a very, very tough year, probably one of the toughest years that I've seen. It's a tough one, no doubt about that. Inflation is killing us. Costs are just going through the roof like everybody else. So.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Thanks, Gina.
Thanks.
Uh, next up, item five, Fire Department, Chief Jankala, item A.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The item that we have before you is to, our new billing provider is taking over on October 1st. They've made a list of recommendations of our master charge list, what we're currently charging and what we should be charging based on the insurance market and what we can actually get paid for. It averages across the board about $178 increase, and we would like to have you approve this for starting October 1, when our new billing takes over, these rates.
Okay. Wish of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Schreiber.
Second.
Support by Councilor Drainis. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same, motion carried. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, item six, under City Administrator, Mr. Przyzynski, item A, your report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. I have one item this evening. I just wanna report to the city council. I have one item this evening, I just wanna report to the city council. And actually, it's for the benefit of our taxpayers because we've all kind of lived the budget process the last six or seven months, whatever it's been. Just procedurally, even though the preliminary levy, levy kind of sailed through city council here, we have been working on it since about May 1st. We work internally as work teams, we roll it out to our city council roughly July, um, robust debate. There's a lot of, you know, what are the top priorities? You know, what we're trying to do is move this community forward without overburdening our taxpayers. Again, for the, for the sake of our taxpayers, I just want them to know, there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of debate, a lot of direction from our city council, so, um, I just wanna make sure we say, uh, that so our taxpayers do know there's a, there's a pretty robust process to come to a conclusion. Councilor Harkonnen has already kind of mentioned some of the challenges, uh, inflation, procurement, there's just a lot of challenges with the budget these days, so, um, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Greg. And, and like our city administrator said and finance and even Councilor Harkonnen said, you know, this is gonna be a tough year and, and I know we've, we're like, we saw it tonight already, you know, we're updating this, our fees are going up there and I understand some people might not like this, it's something overdue, we're gonna, we're gonna have a tough year ahead of us, um, you know, just fuel and everything else, we don't know what's gonna go on, it could keep rising, so, I just, people just, our finance department is gonna work and our department heads are gonna work trying to get this lower, so, if you're watching, don't call the councillors or don't call city hall and start complaining tomorrow that it's, this is only a prelim, so, and you're gonna get, your tax statements are gonna come out and you're gonna see them and all that, so, just, the department heads and finance are gonna try doing the best they can, so, just wanna put that out there to our citizens and let's just see what happens in the end, so, thank you, thanks Greg. Uh, next up, uh, bids and quotes, item one, under city services director, Mr. Arora, item A.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first up here, I have a request, um, to authorize payment to Ziegler CAT for repairs on our city services, uh, skid steer. We're having some issues with the lift arms and drifting down, they won't stay up with the, with the load in them. So we did bring that in and had it fixed. This was a unbudgeted, um, expense, but we do have money in our operating budget for parks to cover the repair of this, so, just asking for your approval to, to make that payment.
Okay, which is the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried, item B.
Next is, uh, regarding the North Hibbing Dog Park and, uh, as, as we've discussed in multiple work sessions, we do need to relocate that, um, kind of kiddy corner from where it is now onto city property and, uh, um, remove it from Hibb-Tac property. Uh, I did get two quotes on fencing to relocate that and I asked for your approval to award it to Iron Oaks Fencing in the amount of $17,170. They can get to it this year, they will start October 17th and hope to be completed by the 25th. Plan on using 450 feet roughly of the existing fence and, uh, and a couple of gates that they can reuse and transfer over to the new location, so that'll help reduce the, the cost on the overall project, so.
Okay, which is the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sakamin.
Support.
Support by Councilor Duranis, any discussion?
I have one quick question.
Councilor Schreiber.
Are they planning on keeping one, one of the halves open during the, the rebuild?
Yes, yes, we will keep the, uh, would be the south half.
The larger side, the south side.
Yeah, that fencing, we can't use, the north half is the mainly the fencing we can use, so we'll keep that, that south side open while the new one is being done. And then the new one as well will still be the same as the old one with about one-third of it small dogs, two-thirds of it larger dogs, so it'll be similar setup as, as the current one.
Okay, thanks.
Any other question?
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried, thanks Nick.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, item two, under fire department, Chief Jankala, uh, item A.
Evening again, um, the first item before you is that we use some ANZI OSHA compliant safety three-season jackets, um, we have it planned for a 2023 budget purchase. Um, because of some, supply chain issues and trying to free up some monies in the 2023 budget, we have some funds this year that we will not be able to accomplish what we had hoped, so with the, um, discussion with the city administrator about moving a couple of these items to the 22 budget, um, the last set of jackets that we have, oh, they're about 10, about 10 years old and they need to be replaced. Um, we did go out and get three quotes, Mars was the cheapest with the reflective Hibbing fire lettering and we're asking to purchase 25, um, three-season vests, jackets, um, for, from our supply for $3,526.50.
Which is the council?
Go ahead. Take that motion.
Motion by Councilor Duranis, support by Councilor Harkonnen, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried, item B.
Uh, the second is the same, uh, it was planned for a 2023 purchase. Our crews work 24-hour shifts, we have eight dorm rooms in the fire station, we cannot remember the last time that the mattresses in the dorms were been replaced. Some folks have brought mattresses from home and it's time for us to change them out and, um, we are looking to buy them from Firehouse Furniture, it's a company that manufactures our own mattresses, they make them specifically for our type of work, our type of dorms, and, um, we're looking to make that purchase for $4,319.92 for the eight dorm rooms.
Okay, which is the council?
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilor Schreiber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sakamin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, your chief. Okay, next up, license and permits, item one, approve the 2022 massage therapy license of Pam Engine 7565 Lipiki Road Side Lake, which is the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried. Item two, approve the raffle permit application request of Hibbing Tourist Senior Center to hold the raffle on Friday, November 25th, 2022 at the Hibbing Tourist Senior Center, wishing the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sakamin.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried. Item three, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold the raffle on Friday, December 2nd, 2022 at the Hibbing Curling Club, which is the council?
Approve.
Motion by Councilor Harkonnen.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schreiber, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried. Item four, approve the special event permit application to the city of Hibbing to hold their Halloween 5K suites on the streets on Saturday, October 29th, 2022, which is the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, motion carried. Item five, approve the tobacco lit, tobacco license application of Virginia Smoke Shop